Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, dear friends. So I welcome to this special session on women leadership in disaster risk reduction, and I look forward to moderating what I'm sure will be a very dynamic discussion. I'm honoured to welcome our distinguished speakers, Mammy Misutori, Special Representative of the United Nations Secretary-General for Disaster Risk Reduction, and Honorable Dr. Seri Dr. Man Aziza Dr. Man Ismail. She said that I pronounced it correctly, fine. And she is the Deputy Prime Minister of Malaysia. And I'm also very pleased to introduce our distinguished panelists, who bring a wealth of diverse experience and expertise to table. Ms. Laura Tak, World Back Vice-President for Sustainable Development. Ambassador Minone Samate Sessuma, Commissioner for Political Affairs and an African Union. She will come a little bit later, but quite soon. And her Excellency, his Excellency, Mr. Zaber Hossein Shoudary, Member of Parliament of the People's Republic of Bangladesh. And then Ms. Dolores Devese, Country Director, Oxfam Solomon Islands, Member of the Solomon Islands National Protection Committee, and also a local leader in disaster risk reduction and resilience. So now, we know that we will have a very limited time. I try to be precise, but democratic, according to the orders I have received. I know that we, everyone of us, would love to listen to them much longer, but all this time limit concerning already this place and everything, so excuse me beforehand. But now, it's my real pleasure to introduce Mammy Misutori, Special Representative, United Nations Secretary-General for Disaster Risk Reduction, and you will make an opening remarks. Please.
Thank you.
This is 10 minutes.
Thank you very much, Madam Moderator. President Helenin, fellow panelists, distinguished delegates. My microphone is not in? No? Hello? Yes? Good. Thank you. Gender equality for disaster risk reduction and for the matter, the UN Office for Disaster Risk Reduction is one of our top priorities. And we were actually rewarded from the UN Women last year for mainstreaming gender equality in everything we do externally, but also internally. As an office, we have a slight imbalance of, imbalance should I say, because we have more women than men in our office, but for now I think it's okay. So we're delighted to have this session on women leadership in disaster risk reduction. And I'm going to go straight into one example that I really like, because I think we know everybody in this room why it is important, women's leadership. So I went to Kenya in March for the UNEA, the UN Environment Assembly, and I visited this city which is called Kisumu. It is one of the cities that is joining what is called the Making Cities Resilient Campaign that we have been running since 2010 with UN Habitat and many other partners. And I went to Kisumu because I was told that there's a very, very dynamic city manager, equivalent to a mayor in that place, and you should go and talk to her and you should see what she's doing. So I did go. I got on a small plane from Nairobi and I went there. And then there was this, you know, lady which was bursting with energy, and I'm afraid, I thought she would come here, but she couldn't make it, but I've heard that her assistant is here. But she showed me around the city the whole day, showing me how she has really prioritized making resilience possible in every corner of her city. And to give you some examples, she took me to the very remote part of her city, edge, where actually when there's a lot of rainfall and the floods come, because deforestation is a big problem in Kenya, and the floods come, where when I went there, there was not a drop of water, it was totally dry, but when it rains, it suddenly becomes a flood. And the part of the edge of the city is, it's separated, and people cannot go to school, people cannot go to work. So she built this bridge. And it's a modest bridge, but the bridge made the big difference. People can go to school, go to work, even after these things happen.
Is the translation working?
No.
Sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
It's a mic, they say that it's not working.
Oh, really? If I speak from my table?
I think that the mic is working from here. Thanks, please. This works.
Okay. So this is about, for those who didn't catch the first part of the story, about a city called Kisumu in Kenya, where there's a very, very dynamic women city manager who is the mayor. And she went to Sendai in 2015. She attended a conference, and she came back convinced that she is going to build resilience in her city. And she's doing it in such a practical way. A, she built this bridge at the edge of the city, which was previously, every time there was rain, because of flood, that part was cut off and people couldn't go to school, couldn't go to work. She took me to this 10 hectare place which was previously a dump yard, basically, but she's now converting it into a green space in her city, taking away all the dump in environmentally safe way to another location. And she's also taking care of the people who lose to live there, because they were scavenging. So she has hired them to take care of the new green place, taking care of the toilets there and things like that. So just two examples, but basically, she said, you know, since Sendai, I was convinced that I have to make my city resilient, and she's doing it. And I quote her as a wonderful way of being a woman leader. And she said, the way that I found out about issues is that I go to communities and I talk with people. And she's very disarming, and the ladies talk about the issues they have. And she said that actually, the ladies know what are their issues. So they would say, city manager, we have this problem, that problem, and then she would work a way to fix it. So A, she's a woman, but she can talk with women, and the women with whom she talks knows what their issues are. So I think this is leadership at the top and leadership at the bottom coming together. We know that women and girls suffer so much when disaster hits. So of course, you know, Zaber can talk more about this, but in April 1991, when Bangladesh experienced a severe cyclone, that 90% of the 140,000 people who lost their lives were women and girls. And then in Europe, this is in Europe, in 2003, when there was a heat wave, the women also died in much greater number. In Japan, in Kobe, when there was a big earthquake in 1995, the women who were elderly, who had to, after the earthquake, go into living in temporary housing, 1995, so right now, it's like, what, 25 years from then, some of them are still living there, because to start with, they had a very unstable job, and they were cut off, and they were living on pension, and they lost their family. And so these cases are so notorious in many places. And so what we need to do is that, we've been saying that Target is important, you saw at the opening ceremony, that very nice theatre play, Targeti. But Targeti, to be really aligned to Sendai framework, it has to have these voices of women in it. The national strategy of disaster risk reduction of every country has to bring these voices of the women to, into the strategy. So that is what we feel is most important. And there has to be an investment in building the women's resilience, because once they become resilient, they will become the agents of change. We talk a lot about women being agents of change, and this is actually what can happen. So my last example is, when I went to Beirut a few weeks ago, Beirut and each government, they have centres for emergency action, but they don't have money to hire extra people. So everybody who is working at there is already an employee who's doing something different, like civil engineering, or a nurse, or whatever. And they volunteer, and they say, okay, I will work in the emergency centre for preparedness and response. And the team were there, and except for one person, everybody was a woman. And I said, wow, you know, this is interesting. And they said, well, I think there's an instinct in women of being caring and wanting to dedicate our time pro bono to do things. And they were actually being the agent of change. So these are just some examples, but what I have observed, and I think there are so many examples, but what we need to do is make these examples known and shared, so that women can really be empowered and women can really take the leadership. So thank you very much.
So thank you very much for your contribute, your introduction. And now I invite Dr. Seri, Man Aziza, Man Ismail, the Deputy Prime Minister of Malaysia. So if you think that why we are smiling so much each other, but I have been learning previous five minutes to pronounce it almost correctly, but your Excellency, now the floor is yours.
Shall I change your seat?
I think, is it now working, the mic?
One, two, test.
No?
So I will, I will, I will go there for a moment.
Could you give an extra applause? Please. I think it's better that, your Excellency, you can come here. Here the mic is working. That certainly, that works. Okay.
Thank you very much. This is another disaster. I was giving another statement there, same thing happened. But anyway, Excellencies, Ladies, Guest, Delegates, Ladies and Gentlemen, good afternoon and salam. It is an honour for me to be here today to say a few words on women leadership in disaster risk reduction. Worldwide risks from natural and man-made hazards are increasing, and annually hundreds of millions of people are affected by various types of disasters. Although disasters affect all in this week, it tends to discriminate along economic and gender lines. Studies analysing the impact of disasters have revealed that women and children face greater risks to their survival and recovery following a disaster. This vulnerability is further aggravated by elements such as poverty and disability. It should be stressed here that women and children are naturally vulnerable anyway, physically. Poverty and gender norms make them more so. For example, according to an Oxfam survey, four times as many women than men were killed in Indonesia, Sri Lanka, and India during the 2004 tsunami, because men were taught how to swim and climb trees at a young age, while women are not. Women made up 61% of those who perished during the Typhoon Nargis in Myanmar, according to the post-Nargis joint assessment released by the tripartite group set up to respond to the humanitarian crisis that ensued. During flood shortages due to drought, during food shortages due to drought, women again bear the brunt, as they are more likely to consume less to give priority to men and children. They also suffer from malnutrition due to specific nutritional needs while being pregnant or breastfeeding. Distinguished members of the audience, I'm going very fast, because I'm scared of the chair, because she says only three minutes. Reducing disaster risks requires all of society approach espoused by the Sendai framework for disaster risk reduction. Women should not be seen as mere victims, because black men, they possess the skills and capacity to prepare for, respond to, and recover from disasters, as well as in managing risks and building resilience. Malaysia's approach to DRR is guided by our belief that women's roles are crucial in making the community more resilient and better prepared for a continuously changing disaster landscape. They are the ones on the ground, as Ms. Mammy has said, and they are the ones able to mobilise the families and communities, given the right tools, knowledge, and empowerment. Malaysia has made notable progress in terms of gender equity and women empowerment. Under the federal constitution, the Supreme Law of Malaysia, Article 8, brackets 2, was amended in 2001 to prohibit gender discrimination. Similarly, the National Policy on Women and Plan of Action for the Advancement of Women have resulted in more coherent and focused programmes to integrate women in development and to further elevate their status in society. In Malaysia, women's roles and leadership in DRR have expanded by leaps and bounds. The fact that I'm here today as the minister in charge, Minister in Charge for Disaster Management is testimony to it, even though I think our friend here thought that was one of the staff in my ministry. Never mind, takes time. As of now, 30% of those holding decision-making positions in our National Disaster Management Agency, NADMA, are women, and we expect the number to increase further in the near future. We believe that women are a force in resilience building and DRR. As such, we need to leverage on this to include at least 50% of women in the formulation of disaster management and DRR programmes. In view of this, the Government of Malaysia is now working more closely with our local NGOs to create more opportunities for women to be actively involved in resilience building and DRR. And one result of this engagement is the change in the design of our temporary shelters for disasters and in the provision of disaster diets for pregnant and nursing mothers, as well as those who need special attentions. Because, you know, in Malaysia, many of us wear the hijab, and we have a problem, and we do not expose in the way, so that we have cubicles catered for that, so it's more cultural and also sensitive to women's needs. To empower and encourage women to be actively involved in DRR, their access to education and health facilities need to be guaranteed in this context. The Government of Malaysia, via various mechanisms, is ensuring that discriminatory policies that inhibit women's access to education and health are eradicated totally. 2018, last year, our women education attainment was higher than men. Last year, women enrolment in tertiary education was 48% compared to 38% for the men. If we use life expectancy to show accessibility to health facilities, women generally live longer than men in Malaysia. And the average life expectancy for women in Malaysia for last year was 77.2 years, which is 10 years longer than their male counterparts. In conclusion, in conclusion.
Yep.
Okay. And Malaysia will continue to strive, Malaysia will continue to strive to strengthen the role of women in disaster risk management and not to compete with the men. We're not competing, we just want to complement each other. That's important. This is also the global agenda. Hand in hand, we can ensure 100% of the population are covered and benefit from risk reduction and resilience building efforts. Thank you.
Your Excellency, thank you very much for your very interesting, charming contribution for us. And now we, now we come back to the panel itself. So these opening statements make a compelling case for the urgent action to ensure women leadership in disaster risk reduction and ensure gender is considered as a key component, like it is also a key component for the sustainable development. So I sincerely hope that our panel discussion today can meet this call to action by putting forward concrete recommendations that leverage the experience, expertise, and leadership of women and girls. Of course, not only because it is also the human right thing, but to do it because experiences have shown that it helps ensure that initiatives to address disaster risk and resilience are more effective, impactful, and sustainable in meeting the needs of those most at risk. So I have already kindly requested panelists and participants from the audience to be concise, so that we have time to hear as many perspectives as possible. In the same spirit, in an effort to seek the views from as many global platform participants as possible, we have used the global platform application to launch online requests to put forward recommendations on how to ensure women leadership in DRR. So I, once again, I encourage you all to log on and participate. So as a greeting advance with organisers of the event, panelists will have a maximum of the four minutes for their interventions, knowing that they could do it many, many times more, because they are very, very good experts. And in making your interventions, we call on you to share concrete recommendations which can help move this issue forward. And some of us have to go to another place earlier times, so if somebody disappears here, it's not a provocation, they just have to go. Okay. But now, Ms. Misutori, you will have now your first question to handle us. So how can the Sendai framework be used as a tool to enable women leadership in DRR and gender responsive organisation? So I think that we are very interested to know, what is risk if diverse stakeholders and the international community do not take action to ensure women leadership in DRR and to make the organisation more gender responsive? So now, please.
Yes. So what does, how can the Sendai framework work? So the Sendai framework has a structure to strengthen the governance of disaster risk reduction, and in sequence, it's, you have to have a national platform. And then you make a national strategy, also a local strategy of disaster risk reduction, and you implement it. And this is about prevention, but even if you prevent and mitigate a lot, when you come to, when you face a disaster, you always need to respond. So when you respond, you need to build back better. These are the things that the Sendai framework, the priorities, ask not only the member states but everyone to do. So, and one of the guiding principles is gender equality. So gender equality has to go into all of these steps. When a national platform is made in a country, whether it's the national level or the local level, you need to include women's voices there. When the strategy is designed, the strategy again has to be designed, absorbing the different views of the women. And then when you build back better, and I think this was one of the main things that was dealt at the World Reconstruction Conference, you build back better to try to address the vulnerabilities that existed before the disaster and make things better. And one of the things would be to make the unequal situation of women better. One example I gave at the opening of the World Reconstruction Conference was in Nepal, in India, after a disaster, if they receive aid from the state to fix their house, if the entitlement of the house before the disaster was only to the husband, if they receive aid, it has to become entitled both to the husband and the wife. So those are the things, and this is build back better, actually. So if you really mainstream gender equality in every step of what the Sendai framework asks us to do, then I think, yes, at the end, we are achieving gender equality.
Thank you. So now I turn to this side, and so I think that you have now heard about Madam Misutori's contribution and also the questions. So Mr. Zaber Hossein Shoudary, you are now serving your fourth term as a Member of Parliament of the People's Republic of Bangladesh, too, I think. And with many of your political efforts, they focused on disaster risk reduction, climate change, sustainable development, and the post-2015 development agenda. So I would ask that, what examples can you share from Bangladesh? For example, in developing Bangladesh's national and local DRR strategies, what specific efforts have been made to account for gender and ensure leadership by women, including the integration of gender in the vulnerable risk and capacity assessments? So, and then the collection and use of the sex-discreted information of data. So a lot of questions and short answer possibility, but based on your experience, what recommendations would you put forward with all of that? Please, let's make a miracle in four minutes.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, and a very good afternoon and greetings from Bangladesh. I certainly don't remember all the questions, and I'm not sure that you will either, but I will just try and not, try and say what other countries or governments should be doing, but share with you the scenario from Bangladesh, which I think is, is an interesting development initiative and an interesting paradigm. I think the first point that I would like to put across is that, in the context of Bangladesh, we can say that women's empowerment isn't just an aspiration, it is a powerful emerging reality. And that, I think, is a very important context for the discussion that we are going to have. So Bangladesh has been quite often in the recent past been referred to as a role model when it comes to women's empowerment. And if you look at all of the statistics and the data, whether it is the gender gap index or the other statistics, it is the top ranking South Asian country. So this is something that we have to have as a context, because not all countries may be up so far in that path to women's empowerment. And this is also one of the main drivers, this meaning women's empowerment, in transforming Bangladesh's status from a least developed country to a middle income country and then on to a developed economy. So you can see that this is one of the main drivers. This is not a selective approach when we look at DRR and we look at women's empowerment, but this is something that is across the board. So it is social, it is political, it is economic. And whether it is the judiciary or the defence services or the bureaucracy, the administration, women are really participating in full in all of those areas. And when we look at the gender gap index, of course, the areas that you look at would be education, it would be health, it would be economic participation, political participation or political empowerment. And I don't mean just at the top level. We all know that the Prime Minister of Bangladesh is a woman, Sheikh Hasina. She has been recognised for her work in this area. The Speaker of Parliament is a woman. But I'm talking about empowerment at the grassroots level, at the local government level, which I think is just as, if not more important. So when you take all of these indicators, Bangladesh is certainly up there. And when we look at DRR, I think this has actually paid off. So for Bangladesh, the women's empowerment dividend has paid off big. It has paid off big time across the board. And this, of course, also includes the specific area of disaster risk reduction. And as one of the most vulnerable countries to the impacts of climate change, we have tried to see how we can harmonise the two. You know, how we can avoid overlap, how we can have more convergence, because as Mammy mentioned in her opening remarks, if you look at the number of deaths that a natural event or a disaster would cause, maybe 20, 30 years back, and look at what it is today... what it is today, there is a huge difference. And this is because of the early warning systems, it is because of the cyclone shelters, and women have played a very important part in that whole process, in terms of designing of the cyclone shelters, in terms of their special needs, making sure that those provisions are there, in terms of community awareness, you know, for instance, raising a red flag in the village in a coastal area which tells all the fishermen that they should be coming back. So women have been instrumental in this. And I think this is not a one-off. If you look at where Bangladesh has succeeded in terms of the Millennium Development Goals, you will see that the areas are again where women have had a very important role. So whether it is reduction in poverty, whether it is child mortality, whether it is maternal health, these are all areas, or even universal primary education, where the women have played an important role. So the big takeaway, the big lesson from Bangladesh is, when you're looking at women's empowerment, it cannot be selective. You cannot just look at DRR or climate change. If there is a whole-of-society approach and the people as a whole are empowered, then that provides the perfect enabling environment where you can get the maximum possible traction on the DRR agenda. And although, although I'm sitting on the edge of this table, that's not how UN, ISDR looks at the role of men. You know, they are certainly very much in the, in the middle and front and center. And this is important because in Bangladesh, I think, this change in mindsets, where men see that women are an important contributor to the growth of the economy, and this basic idea that all of us cannot move forward by leaving half of us behind, simply not possible. And women represent that other half. So yes, voices of women have to be heard, but when they are, when those voices are heard by people who are already sensitized to this agenda, then the traction is deeper and the impacts are even more sustainable and long-lasting. So I think that's the message that I would like to share with you in the opening thoughts. I know this is going to be an interactive session, and I welcome questions at the end. Thank you.
And as everybody sees, he's still smiling with us. So thank you very much for your contribution. And now we go to another anchor in the way. So Mrs. Tak, many argue that since the, for instance, the data shows that the women and girls are already disproportionately affected by disasters, and so we are doing all these efforts. So how can donors, technical partners, and international organizations ensure that the financing for DRR is contingent on approaches that account for gender and populations most at risk? Please, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Madam Moderator. Good afternoon, everybody. Let me look at this a couple different ways. First, I think institutions like the World Bank, like the multilateral development banks, like the UN, other agencies can do a couple things. One of the most important is to really formalize policy and strategy, not just aspirational, but really make it a requirement in the way they do business, and then to be sure they have the capacity to implement what they say. So let me be concrete. At the World Bank, we have two things. We have a gender strategy and we have an environmental and social framework. The first since 2015, the second just took effect in October of last year. And our gender strategy requires us, every time we make an investment, to look at the gender dimensions and to identify and try to close the gaps in development outcomes between men and women, especially the poorest. And the environmental and social framework requires every single investment we do to identify and mitigate the risk to those who are most likely to be adversely affected by a project or those who might have limited capacity to benefit from the project, and that means everybody, and particularly that we look at women. So we have a very strong gender team, and we've hired a lot of social development specialists to help us focus. And this is built into everything we do, as you said, not just related to disaster risk reduction, but on disaster risk. And I think this is very consistent with what you heard from Mami and Her Excellency and from Bangladesh as well, three sort of ways that we want to think about women and disaster risk. The first, we need to address the higher risks that women face, you heard a little bit about that. Second, we need to engage women in the relief and recovery efforts. And third, we need to support women's empowerment more generally to make them more, them and their communities a little more resilient. So I'll say a couple things, hopefully find a couple different examples than Bangladesh, which I think is actually a really good example. So on the higher level of risks that women face, in Bangladesh in particular, I think what was interesting about what they did was really finding specific ways that women were being impacted and creating, as you just heard, women's space in shelters, training women as the community mobilizers, you heard about the flags, and, and the numbers, you said drastically, so I actually have some numbers, they went from 14 to 1, the ratio of women to men that died, to 5 to 1 between 1991 and 2007. So it's really impressive, and I think it's a testament to the leadership that you've seen in Bangladesh. On encouraging women in the relief and recovery efforts, and you heard some of this from, from Mami, in 2011, there was floods in Thailand. And so the Thai government and the UN and the bank, we got together to do this damage and reconstruction assessment with CSOs and so forth. And what we discovered was that women were lacking access to the recovery schemes that were going to help them replace their lost farm assets or help them get temporary employment. And we discovered that there was a higher proportion of women in those who were affected. And so we worked with the Thai government, and they then deliberately went out in the new programs, the Labor Intensive Public Works Program they put together, to be sure that women were brought in equivalent, on equal basis with women and, with men, and to be sure that they were eligible for the recovery assistance. You heard this example of the land in India. And then the third point that I was making on the women's empowerment, so a couple things, really to bring out women's management skills and harness that for the benefit of themselves, but also for their whole communities. So one way to go about that is with savings and loan groups that have really led to improvements in resilience in places like Ethiopia, Kenya, and India, where you put these groups together and it helps them generate income that helps them preserve their assets and improve their food security and better manage the risks as they face drought cycles. And another way to do empowerment, many of you are familiar with, is something called CDD or Community Driven Development, which gives citizens and women in particular control over resources for local projects. And one example of that is in the Philippines, where we've been working with the, with the bank, with the government. After Typhoon Yolanda, for instance, they have a national CDD program that helped the communities drive what they needed to build back better. And there's something called the DAMPA Network, which has over 200 community-based organizations, and they're all women-led, and they represent rural and urban poor communities in the Philippines. And then that group partnered with the government to deliver the disaster relief assistance after Typhoon Hyun. And then they started this program on community-based risk mapping that helped inform the prioritization and the design of the investments that were then done at the community level. So let me stop there, and I look forward to your thoughts.
You were worried that you will have a very long contribution. Now you were almost exactly what, what was the time limit. And wonderful, wonderful expertise also. Thank you very much. So I turn to the, my left side, and so I go to Ambassador Samate. Welcome to the panel. You came a little bit later because of your duties. You are the Commissioner for Political Affairs of the African Union for contribution, and so, so you have a lot of experience from Africa already. So Ambassador, what role does, so could the African Union play in ensuring the increased DRR and resilience resources, let's finance it human or technical, are made available for targeting action for women and girls affected by, at, and at the risk of disasters? And how do you see the women's leadership in DRR and resilience building? So what do you think that the lessons you have learned and what you could also apply for the others? I mean, what are the successes, but don't avoid either the challenges we are facing still. So don't be just polite. Just tell how you see it.
Merci. Et vous? Yes. C'est bon? C'est bon? Ouais. Merci beaucoup, Madame la modératrice, et vous dire le plaisir que je ressens à faire partie de ce panel sur le leadership des femmes dans la réduction des risques de catastrophe naturelle. Beaucoup d'oratrices l'ont dit avant moi, les femmes et les filles jouent un rôle central dans toutes les activités.
Is the transition working? Transition? Is it working? Okay, so we have to find. Mami and I, what's the correct? Yes, please go on. Très bien.
Merci beaucoup. Je disais que les femmes jouent, les femmes et les filles jouent un rôle important dans toutes les sphères de la société, et elles ont un rôle social, politique et environnemental, économique, dire que c'est important leur rôle. Mais nous constatons qu'en situation de catastrophe, et beaucoup d'oratrices l'ont dit, et d'orateurs, les femmes sont les plus touchées et de manière disproportionnée par les catastrophes, d'ailleurs plus que les hommes, parce que les femmes rurales encore plus par rapport à celles qui vivent en ville. Et plusieurs facteurs favorisent cela. Il y a leur vulnérabilité même en tant que femmes, et surtout l'accès au système d'aller de précoce dans le cas de la réduction des catastrophes. Elles n'ont pas accès à l'aide précoces pour pouvoir jouer un grand rôle. Dans certaines sociétés, nous avons aujourd'hui les nouvelles technologies. Dans certaines sociétés, les femmes ne peuvent même pas avoir une radio ou un téléphone pour justement être informée du risque, et surtout jouer un grand rôle. Vous me demanderez, vous me demandez au niveau de l'Union Africaine qu'avons-nous fait? L'Union Africaine, je dois dire, Madame la modératrice, est l'une des organisations à avoir la parité 50%, 50% au niveau du leadership. Nous avons dix commissaires, dix responsables, et 500 femmes et 500 hommes, et j'ai le domaine des affaires politiques, et nous traitons également de ce sujet. L'Union Africaine a vraiment reconnu ce rôle, y compris en matière de réduction des risques, parce que nous avons élaboré une stratégie sur l'égalité hommes-femmes, et également pour l'autonomisation des femmes. Beaucoup d'oratrices l'ont signalé sans moyen, sans autonomie, les femmes ne peuvent pas jouer un grand rôle, et nous avons compris cela avec notre stratégie 2017-2027. Cette stratégie, vous me demanderez, c'est quoi? Cette stratégie repose sur la possibilité pour la femme d'avoir des résultats, d'exploiter des opportunités, et surtout la promotion et la protection des droits de la femme en renforçant leur capacité de responsabilisation au niveau des institutions, et surtout donner la voix aux femmes et aux filles pour être influentes dans toutes les sphères de la société. Je peux vous assurer, c'est pas facile. L'Afrique a des cultures et des coutumes parfois retrogrades, mais l'Union Africaine se bat pour avoir cette possibilité pour les femmes, pour qu'elles puissent jouer leur rôle dans la société. La stratégie est un référentiel au niveau des programmes de la Commission, y compris les risques de réduction, la réduction des risques de catastrophe. Et nous avons récemment, pour renforcer ce rôle, nous avons créé, mis en place un conseil consultatif de la jeunesse et un groupe consultatif en sciences et technologies pour la réduction des risques de catastrophe sur le continent africain. Le leadership de ces deux mécanismes est composé à 50% de femmes et 50% d'hommes. Nous avons des difficultés pour avoir les 50%, mais nous insistons, vous avez parlé de recommandation, sur la nécessité de former. Si les femmes sont éduquées, elles sont formées, elles peuvent faire partie. Nous nous battons pour que l'on puisse avoir cette égalité au niveau de ces deux mécanismes. La l'autonomisation des femmes, si les femmes ont beaucoup plus de moyens, elles sont plus à même de contribuer à la réduction des risques sur le continent africain. La participation des femmes est encouragée au niveau de l'Union Africaine, au niveau des États-mâmes et des communautés économiques régionales, qui sont les piliers de notre, notre Union. Nous travaillons avec ces pays, nos pays, pour les encourager à aller dans l'égalité dans toutes les sphères, et particulièrement aussi pour réduire les risques, parce que s'il y a un risque, ce sont les femmes et les filles qui sont les plus touchées. La Commission a sélectionné ces organisations, nous insistons pour que ces femmes puissent jouer un grand rôle. Comme recommandation, j'insisterai sur l'éducation des femmes, l'autonomisation des femmes, améliorer leur, la résilience au niveau des femmes sur le continent africain. Et si ces femmes sont éduquées, elles disposent de moyens, elles pourront apporter une contribution à la réduction des risques de catastrophe sur le continent africain. Merci, et nous restons disponibles pour les questions. Merci, Madame la modératrice.
Merci, merci beaucoup. Très bien. That's all, my friends. And then, then we have the next speaker already for the preparations, and she is Miss Doris Davies. And so you are, you are the Country Director of Solomon Islands, where we have heard a very sad news. And you are also the Member of Solomon Islands National Protection Committee and a local leader in disaster risk reduction and resilience. So you have experience from the different levels. So how do you see that, how the women can at a local level, and of course on all levels, be empowered as leaders and consulted in efforts to address disaster risk and build resilience, including the design, implementation, and impact and assessment of DRR policies, plans, and programs? So I think that we all are very, very much, we have a sympathy concerning what has happened on the islands. And then what you think are the best practices, what you could be introduced also to the others? Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, I feel very honored to be sitting and sharing the same table with highly esteemed delegates in the panel. So thank you for the opportunity. For, I think, in terms of my, what I wanted to flag here, women are often seen as victims of disasters, but in fact, women are first responders and must be provided the opportunities to do so. As the other speakers have already mentioned, that women play a central role in communities' resilience and recovery. And when provided the opportunity and the right resources to lead, as we have seen in our work in the Solomon Islands, but also in the Pacific region as a whole, we have a project that we call the Humanitarian Project, which is mainly targeting women in leadership roles in humanitarian, so training women to become first responders. There are also sufficient examples of our work in Vanuatu, in our cash transfer program, when women have led an innovative approach to ensuring fast recovery for affected populations. So I think we have enough evidence across the work in terms of the best practices where women have been able to design and lead the work that's on the ground. At the same time, we must also continue to address and tackle the issues of inequality that exist, because unless we break down those barriers, we will continue to face the challenges that we face in terms of the risks involved. Inequality also hampers advancement of women in leadership in all sectors. It is not all about numbers, but also about our own attitude and behaviors. Far too often, interventions for women are also reduced to community level, and we continue to see the under-representation of women in leadership and that we are clearly not meeting our targets under the, under the SDGs. Yesterday, I participated in the World Reconstruction Conference, a session on women in leadership, and what was striking was the challenges and obstacles faced by women with disabilities, the elderly, young people, people who are usually marginalized. It continued to remain as significant gaps, and they continue to be sidelined in our efforts. We need to change our mindsets and recognize that they all have a role to play. In terms of ensuring that we can empower women as leaders, we need targeted resources and actions. And targeted meaning that even though there is a plethora of normative In terms of ensuring that we can empower women as leaders, we need targeted resources and actions. And targeted meaning that even though there is a plethora of normative commitments recognizing the importance of gender responsive disaster risk reduction and resilience building, significant gaps remain in the implementation. For example, in 2016, only 1.7% of the projects in Oatcha's financial tracking system that applied the IASC gender marker included targeted actions for women and girls. This is too low. We need to do better. The Sendai framework recognizes the importance of women's leadership in DRR and although, as I said, there has been progress, we are still lagging behind in our targets and in meeting our objectives. We need a robust multi-stakeholder approach. We need policies and plans, as mentioned earlier by the respective speakers, that have gender responsive targets at the core of these policies and strategies. The Solomon Islands National Disaster Management Plan, for example, has specific targets that says that as humanitarian agencies, we have to engage women at all levels. We need this reflected in all strategies and plans on the ground across multi-stakeholder agencies. And we need gender champions in our highest offices to drive this agenda forward. There has been a lot of best practices that have been shared, there have been a lot of lessons learned and I think now it's time for action. I'll leave you there for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. They are, they are really very, very precise also concerning the time limits and the contents have been just wonderful. Thank you very much. And now, you should be now very, very much keen on the audience because the organizers have thought that we go neither the audience to see your, their views and particularly their recommendations. We have counted that we have time for three interventions if they are keeping as precise as you. And so what are your recommendations to ensure women's leadership and a gender responsive DRR, which is, which is results-driven and has lasting impact? So I have already, this is a normal system, please raise your hand and the colleague on the floor will approach you with the mic. We kindly request that you are concise, so we have time to hear from as many people as possible. And this is not quite random, I tell it. One lady is reserved beforehand because we couldn't get enough NGO representative. Okay, you take this but now, otherwise it's totally, totally free and I don't know how we designed to, how to choose but, but now she is the first one, please.
Hello, I'm Rula Zaiter from Lebanon, local leader from Lebanon, from the Lebanese Democratic Women Gathering, RDFL. Allow me to speak in Arabic. Ready? نعمل على قضايا تتعلق بالحماية للنساء كما تخل الحد من مخاطر الكوارث في الأزمات الممتدة. Five. نعمل على قضايا تتعلق بالحماية للنساء كما تخل الحد من مخاطر الكوارث في الأزمات الممتدة. نعلم أنه لا توازن في القوى بين النساء والرجال. لهذا ومن أجل تحدي هذا اللاتوازن نوصي الامم المتحدة إشراك النساء المحليات في التخطيط لفعاليات ومعتمرات الامم المتحدة حول التقليل من مخاطر الكوارث. ونوصي الامم المتحدة أيضاً أن تطلب من الدول إشراك النساء المحليات عند إعداد التقارير حول Sendai Framework. كما نوصي الجهات المانحة للدول التي تتعرد لمخاطر الكوارث أن تضمن إشراك الجمعيات النساءية والمجموعات النساءية المحلية في المشاريع المستدامة بكافة مراحلها بدأ من دراسة الاحتياج إلى التخطيط ثم التنفيذ والقييم وأن تطور أنظمة وقليات رقابية تضمن مشاركة المجموعات النساءية المحلية في الأعمال بكل مستوياته على التقليل من مخاطر الأزمات المتعلقة بهن. شكرا.
Change the equality, it's a man now, okay? Which language? Now for the man, for the man. Okay.
Buenas tardes a todas y todos.
Ah, Spanish.
Listos.
Okay. Eh, mi pregunta específicamente para la mesa es por qué Latinoamérica y las mujeres de Latinoamérica no están representadas en la mesa? Porque tenemos muchas cosas que decir en función de las necesidades que se tienen en nuestro continente. Hay muchas lideresas que están trabajando en la reducción de riesgo de desastres desde hace muchos años y tienen muchas cosas que compartir. Sí, sí, ah, ahí está. Okay. Esta es la pregunta y por eso decía que mi compañera que es de Centroamérica eh, haría la pregunta pero de todos modos ustedes me van a dar una respuesta.
And then, un mujer de Latinoamérica. Can you find a woman from Latinoamérica? There, take, take her.
Soy agricultora, soy nicaragüense y trabajo con una red de mujeres de cooperativa, soy miembro de la Comisión Guairo. Quiero decirles que las mujeres estamos organizadas en Nicaragua y en Centroamérica y trabajamos la reducción de riesgo y desastre. Nosotros trabajamos el marco de Sendai pero no podemos solamente el marco de Sendai, también los objetivos de desarrollo porque nosotros estamos este ahorita sintiendo todos los efectos del cambio climático. Nosotros las mujeres no somos vulnerables, nos ubican en zonas vulnerables. Nosotros somos mujeres capaces de enfrentar todas las situaciones pero damos respuesta primero antes que el gobierno pero también trabajamos de manera conjunta con los gobiernos locales. Y como decía la compañera embajadora, nosotros nos hemos preparado en formación política. Por eso nosotros hoy tenemos 18 mujeres de base ocupando también las estructuras de gobierno local. Qué es lo que quiero decir con esto? Contamos con herramientas como el mapeo de riesgo, entonces se necesita ir a la acción. Necesitamos trabajar con ustedes de manera conjunta pero trabajar con las mujeres de base y eso es lo que nosotros estamos esperando porque ya estamos preparadas. Muchas gracias.
Yeah, gracias. Thank, thank you very much and now, I think that you are capable to take one more. Okay, you can give, you can choose, then it's, we can share the critics, okay? You?
Buenas tardes. Un saludo desde El Salvador en Centroamérica, mi nombre es Angélica Montiagud. Yo tengo una inquietud, como bien lo decía el señor, no están las latinas pero tampoco están las mujeres con discapacidad. Nosotras estamos trabajando en un proyecto de empoderamiento de las mujeres y las mujeres con discapacidad sí pueden aportar en lo que es la reducción de riesgos y no solamente ser un ente receptor de ayuda, de que me evacúen sino que podemos estar antes en la planificación, durante el proceso y después del proceso de un fenómeno natural. Es ahí donde las mujeres con discapacidad podemos aportar. Tenemos tanto que compartir porque lamentablemente siempre vienen ayudas para decirnos cómo y no nos preguntan cómo podemos hacerlo cuando nosotras tenemos la experiencia de vida que podemos aportar para que no se dé una doble discapacidad al momento de la evacuación, cómo hacer sistemas de alerta inclusivos para mujeres sordas, para las mujeres ciegas, para las mujeres con discapacidad intelectual, para las mujeres con discapacidad psicosocial que tengan su medicamento a tiempo o antes también mujeres en el momento de un desastre adquieren una discapacidad psicosocial. En todo este contexto es necesario que la voz de las mujeres esté presente. Envito pues a los organizadores a que tomen acción en este campo y que las mujeres con discapacidad estemos incluidas en esta planificación. Gracias.
Thank you, muchas gracias. So now I think that we, I know you are all very, very lively and I have discriminated the gentleman here in the first row, he has been very active all the time. But now, in order to give the possibility for the members of the panel to answer also or to more to say, to reflect these, these questions, so I turn again to you and now in, in the opposite direction what was earlier. So I just remind you that we have three days still here and this is not the only place and all these are very, very easily also taking in the hand and continuing the discussions in the corridors where you see them and there will be, immediately after this also the other, other discussions. But it has been very lively discussion and to help ensure the discussion contributes to concrete recommendations and outcomes, I would like to ask each of you what are now your recommendations after these discussions? I already take, taken examples that Latin America was very active and I think that organizers have not wanted to neglect them and Madame Bachele from the Human Rights Commission and Council and many others, they will be actively avoid, with our, our organization. But then also, you have now still the three minutes, the last three minutes to answer. I have edited my own, own part so short that you have very well the time for this. And now Ambassador Samad, what would you think about it? Also the handicapped people were, were taking quite, quite well here, old people also should be and so but now it's your turn to, to reflect, please Ambassador.
Je crois que c'est vraiment important l'inclusion des personnes vivant avec un handicap et l'Union africaine n'a pas perdu cela de vue parce que nous avons demandé aux États membres d'aligner leur stratégie nationale sur le cadre de Sendai et puis, laquelle stratégie accorde une place de choix aux gens? Et nous avons d'ailleurs à la matière des instruments juridiques consacrés aux personnes vivantes avec handicap et la nécessité de les inclure dans toutes les stratégies concernant les sociétés africaines. Les États membres aussi ont été encouragés à consacrer une partie de leur budget justement sur la réduction des risques de catastrophe et parmi les mesures à prendre, c'est de tenir compte déjà de la jeunesse et des personnes vivantes avec handicap. Et pour terminer comme c'est tout juste trois minutes, la stratégie d'autonomie financière est en cours d'élaboration au niveau de l'Union africaine pour pousser les États membres à favoriser cette autonomie et toutes ces activités doivent mettre l'accent sur les femmes, la jeunesse et les personnes vivantes avec handicap. Naturellement, on n'oublie pas les hommes, on a besoin des hommes et de l'accompagnement des hommes dans tout ce processus. Et quelque chose aussi, il y a une des oratrices qui a parlé des femmes en politique, l'un de mes combats au niveau de la Commission de l'Union africaine, c'est de voir des femmes émerger en politique parce que si les femmes font partie des décisions, quelles que soient les décisions, elles peuvent faire valoir leurs droits et nous sommes en train de mettre sur le pied une stratégie pour justement encourager les femmes en politique et leur permettre d'aller de l'avant. Et nous avons des expériences vraiment au niveau de nos pays comme Rwanda qui a au Parlement plus de femmes que d'hommes et y compris des personnes handicapées et beaucoup d'autres pays sont dans cette dynamique pour avoir plus de femmes leaders politiques. Et on a créé aussi un réseau des femmes leaders pour encourager les femmes leaders à faire émerger d'autres femmes leaders et ça a surpris que nous pourrons voir les femmes à tous les niveaux de responsabilité, y compris la réduction des risques de catastrophe et particulièrement tous les secteurs de la société d'une manière générale. Merci beaucoup. On pourra continuer le débat sur l'expérience de l'Union africaine et des États africains dans justement en matière de réduction des catastrophes. Merci beaucoup Madame la modératrice.
Well, thanks to you Ambassador and then not ignoring the man. Mister Shoudari, what, what are your reflections, your responses for the discussion and for the, for the audience?
Thank you, Madame moderator. I don't think there were any specific questions to the panelists, there were just thoughts and observations that were shared. But let me try and, and put some more context into the discussions, this is from my own experience. I think we, all of us, whether it is governments or activists at the grassroots level, we have to look at DRR not as a standalone agenda but as an integral part of Agenda 2030. I think that's very important because you have to see how the climate change agenda, how the sustainable development goals and DRR, what is the interplay between them? How do they reinforce each other? How do they, you know, sort of play on each other's strengths and weaknesses? So I think that's number one which is very important. So it's not a new agenda and I think we have to look at it in terms of an overall holistic agenda so that we avoid fragmentation, we avoid duplication and we make sure that we have the most efficient use of limited resources. I think that's very important. The number two point I would make is if you look at the SDG slogan which applies to DRR as well, leaving no one behind. So we have to try and identify who are the most vulnerable in our society, who are in danger of being left behind when it comes to the disaster or disaster reduction agenda. And then we have to target action which is geared towards them. So yes, people with disabilities. So I think that spirit of leaving no one behind applies equally to DRR and that's where you need a whole of society, all of government, a holistic approach, a very inclusive approach. I think that is also something which is very, very important. The third point I would make is, and it's all very well when we talk about reducing risk, but do we understand risk? Have we tried to assess the risk? Because what you are not able to assess, what you are not able to identify, what you are not able to quantify, how can you say that you've actually reduced? So it's like action that we take on climate change, is it, can we verify it? Can we report it? Can we monitor it? So I think that's very important because each country will have their own risk profile. And the other aspect which came across very strongly, we had a meeting of parliamentarians yesterday, is that especially if you look at CARICOM or the small island development states, you know, they are not just thinking about national strategies, they're also looking at it regionally. Because a lot of the, a lot of the interventions, a lot of the initiatives will have to be construed from the point of view of the region as a whole. And we know that when a disaster strikes, it doesn't respect national borders. So transboundary cooperation, cross-border, I think these all come into play. Thank you.
Thank you very much and then, Your Excellency Madame Tak. So you have your three minutes. So you have your three minutes. Even you said that you will be very, very brief. Please use it.
I'll be brief, yeah. So I agree with this importance of all of government, all of development, all of this has to be gender-informed. But I want to give a, I'm not going to go back over the three priorities I gave before. I want to just give something very specific related to disaster risk and I think it's important that we recognize and formalize the role that women can play at the local and national level in building resilience. So yesterday, like my colleague, we had this grassroots academy where women came from all over the world to learn and share experiences in disaster risk management. And it's really inspirational and empowering. And because you raised a question about Latin America, I should say, Latin America was very well represented and it was amazing the things that people are doing. There's a very mature and active grassroots initiatives that are going on with indigenous women in particular who have started doing this mapping that I was talking about before and learning from each other and using this mapping exercise, what is risk, what do they face, to engage in dialogue and access resources from local authorities to reduce the risk in preparedness and preparation and planning, but also in recovery. And so what happened then over time is their efforts were recognized by the national and the regional disaster management agencies and their roles became more formalized and they started in fact training local governments because they stay, the communities are there while local government people come and they go. And so these women have been able to devise these gender-sensitive, disability-sensitive, all these different ways so that the responses, the planning was tailored to the kinds of needs that only they knew. They were very relevant to the context. And so in Honduras and Guatemala and Nicaragua, they created these campaigns that had real engagement of these women's groups and other grassroots organizations to cooperate. And I just think this is fantastic and I think it's something that we need to really be rolling out globally and show how this collaboration can happen. There's also this question of trust and it's come up. Somebody mentioned earlier this point about attitude and really trusting that these organizations know much better than we as technocrats and government authorities and international agencies know and to build on that knowledge and to trust they know what to do and how to do it. I think it's very important for us to build programs based on that. So let me stop there. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Excellency. I agree with the process. So from which country are you originally?
US.
US, okay. America, North America is represented. I come from Europe and so nobody from the panel has been really representing Europe and I'm coming very, very, very north. So we have a different kind of the risk, but the climate change is really dangerous for us because we have used to have a snow and ice and so in the future we will be also in panic. But now, I'm not telling about that, but I mention it because otherwise all the Europeans come and say that why didn't you tell anything about your region? But the confidence building is very important. What do you think, Your Excellency Debezy, how it goes? What are your reflections concerning now the audience here and also the other panelists? Please.
Thank you. Sorry, didn't expect that. I mentioned earlier about the need to break down barriers and I think we need to break down barriers and continue to talking about them and us. When we want to put women, the most marginalized people, at the center of our work, it's all about us. It's not them and us. And I think we are always challenged by this in country all the time because the Solomon Islands is made up of over 900 islands, about nine provinces. And we usually get the usual statements or comments about, oh, but she's from that province or he is from that province and therefore representing that province. We really need to break down those barriers. When we see someone that we want to see at the, I guess, the decision-making table that is at the front, our role is to continue to empower them and uplift them in that space. The other points I wanted to flag was also around localization and simplicity. Sometimes we make it sound too complex or we go out of our way to make it really complicated in terms of meeting our achievements. We really need to keep it simple and we really need to push our localization agenda to be at the forefront of everything we do as well. The other thing I wanted to raise is about the terminology of mainstreaming. Mainstreaming has been used, from my experience, as a tick-in-a-box process. We get to the end of a process and then we apply the gender lens. This has to change. We really need it to be at, right at the beginning of all our work. We really need it to be at the forefront of all our prevention, our preparedness, response and recovery priorities. Otherwise we will never get to see the achievements. The final thing I wanted to, as part of my recommendations, was the mandatory use of sex, age and disability disaggregated data. I was really surprised even in the past few days to find out that it's not compulsory. For us to be able to ensure that there is visibility of people with disabilities, women, young people and children, it needs to be mandatory for all of us that we are collecting this data, that we are able to look at the reality and the figures that are in front of us. Without that commitment and will for action, we will not achieve our targets. Thank you.
So, thank you very much. I know that the audience could be much more active if we could allow it. But, so I will remind you that even this has been a very dynamic discussion. It has been too short, of course, but I would like to thank the panel and the audience for your participation and trust that the discussion on this critical issue and related action will not stop here. You will have still a few days further to continue. In fact, it should be, yeah. Behind me you can see the top of the recommendations which have been submitted by participants via the GPR. And of course, the recommendations and opportunities discussed today in this room will be documented in the Global Platform Chair's summary as a means to drive specific and practical measures forward. But I will also say that please use also the other discussions as actively as today, so after a couple of days we will have much better situation to go on. And I fully agree also the same issue what has been mentioned many times, confidence, trust to each other on all levels, local, national, regional, global. It's very important and it's good to remember that we are part of that. So thank you very much for you. The special session Women Leadership in Disaster Risk Reduction concurs. Thank you.